Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Ms. Kerr, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely. You can please stand us. Stand and join us. Hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome those who are here for purposes of addressing the board at the proper time and in the order of their request. For those who have not already submitted a request, we have provided forms in the back of the room and also have additional copies here in the front at the Assistant Secretary's position. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. You may also make a request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such a time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the Chair and not to individual members to the board or to the staff. The Board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's closed session agenda. In closed session today, the Board voted to approve an interim scope of remedial action plan and cost-sharing agreement between the District and the Santa Catalina Island Company, providing a mechanism for the island company to pay for a portion of soil remediation costs. The vote was five-zero with all members present and participating in the vote to approve. Public hearing, we have none. Agenda items for separate action.
Yes, Madam President, members of the Board, there are three modifications we need to make to the agenda tonight. The first one is the last item, number 12, in the instruction report. The amount is incorrect. It should say $1,860,798, not $768. It was a typo. The next item is on the purchasing and contract report on item number 94. That item reads right now, contractor to pay the District $50 per semester. It should say $500 per semester. And it's not under the Deputy Superintendent Schools, it's under OCIPD. And then the last item is the last item under our new business, where it says 2019-20 certification of signatures. This is an annual thing that we have to do. And Mr. David Zaid's name was left off of that signature page, so the one that you sign, it will be added. So if you would adopt the agenda with those three changes.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes five-zero. Approval of minutes. Move approval?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes five-zero. Communications? We have some retirees this evening, so... We're already celebrating. So we will start with Dr. Benitez.
Yes, it's my honor to call Lisa Torres up to the podium, please. Is Lisa here? Whereas Lisa Torres is retiring after 25 years of dedicated service to the students of the Long Beach Unified School District, and whereas after beginning her career as a teacher and coach at local parochial schools, she has served the students of the District as a counselor at Bryant, Carver, Burrows, Madison, Emerson, Smith, and Cleveland Schools, serving part-time or full-time at Cleveland for her entire career with the District. And whereas she was always available to students to listen to them, help them solve a problem, or provide intervention services to meet their needs, as evidenced when she earned the "hats off" award from the Council of Exceptional Children. And whereas her organizational skills and excellence, from scheduling of state testing to organizing well-received spirit assemblies, and her thoroughness and attention to detail created a meaningful event for her school community. And whereas she is a highly dedicated and effective school professional whose positive rapport with students, parents, colleagues, has helped to positively impact so many young lives during more than 43 years as an educator. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Long Beach Unified School District commends and expresses deep gratitude to Lisa Torres for her significant and lasting contribution to the education of thousands of students.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to say thank you for this recognition. This is exciting, something, it's kind of, you know, twofold. It's exciting, but also I'm sad that I won't have the opportunity to continue working, but that's okay. That's okay, too. And, you know, in the 43 years that I've had, that I've worked, I've worked with a lot of different students, going all the way from high school down to, through elementary level. And in fact, when I was a high school teacher, Megan Kerr was one of my students. So it's very special that I get to do this while she is a board member. So I just want to say thank you very much for the opportunity to have worked with this awesome district. And it's, you know, I've created, I've had a lot of good memories. I've met a lot of lifelong friends here. And I really appreciate, you know, the support that I've been given. Thank you very much.
When we choose these and we get into the meeting, I was the last one in the room, so I didn't see that it was yours, or I absolutely would have taken it. So they said Lisa Torres, and I... So I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the women and girls you have worked with and inspired, especially women and girls, to be strong courageous leaders, and you've set an incredible example. So congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Meyer.
Yes, it's my honor to introduce Barbara Colkenbeck. Barbara's retiring after 20 years of dedicated service to the students of the Long Beach Unified School District, where she served the students of the District as a teacher, special education teacher for the Special Education Office, and at Burbank, Nieto Herrera, Stevenson, Hughes, Barton, McKinley, and Madison Schools. And where she's a consummate professional whose energy, positive outlook, and patience have helped to make her a valuable resource to the students, parents, staff at the schools where she has served. Where she's especially adept at organizing and presenting lessons that meet students' needs based upon their IEPs, providing support in classrooms and communicating student performance and expectations to parents in a timely fashion, keeping her working relationship strong. And where she's a team player who's frequently sought for her assistance and professional opinion on how to best assist students in the area of their expertise. And by consulting regularly with primary teachers, she contributed greatly to the progress of students as they improved their academic, social, and special language development. Now therefore be it resolved that Barbara Colkenbeck be thanked for her long service, her dedicated work, her significant and lasting contributions to the education of thousands of students.
I'd just like to take the time to say thank you so much for the opportunity of doing what I love to do every day. I've been at it for 40 years, from all ages to all disorders in our district and other districts surrounding. And I just love doing speech therapy. It's an ongoing challenge daily in our new disorders that seem to pop up overnight of how to solve the puzzle of getting these kids to communicate. It's really exciting. But I'd really like to thank my parents that put me through college. And my mom is here tonight, and she's 98 years old. So thanks, y'all.
Well, this is a lot of fun. First, we have a very special connection with the teacher and a student and the board and, you know, the community. And now another teacher who's been at it for 40 years, I thought I heard you say, and your mom is here to celebrate with you. This is incredible. We're gonna continue because we're on a roll. So Dr. Williams, you're next.
I go last. Is this the last one?
This is the last one.
Well, last but not least, Denise Sparkle Peterson, would you? Whereas Denise Sparkle Peterson is retiring after 30 years of dedicated service to the students of the Long Beach Unified School District. And whereas she has served the students of the District as a teacher, program facilitator, assistant principal, and principal for the Special Education Office, coordinated student services at Bercham, Jefferson, Powell, Butler, and Nelson Schools. And whereas she is known for her ability to get the job done right while also nurturing the people around her. And she is a warm and demanding leader who supports the growth of staff and students alike. And whereas she provides her students with safe and structured learning environments each and every day while insisting on instruction that narrows achievement gaps. And she shares her wealth of knowledge in the area of building cultures with colleagues at other schools. And several community organizations have recognized her with awards for excellence. And whereas when she walks her campus, she calls students by name, checking in on their personal and school lives while reminding them of her high expectations for them. And the Peterson Kindness Club was started in her honor to continue and strengthen her trademark values of kindness, empathy, and compassion. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Long Beach Unified School District commends and expresses deep gratitude to Denise Sparkle Peterson for her significant and lasting contributions to the education of thousands of students.
Wow. This is my moment. So I need everyone to please be patient for a minute. First of all, to the Board of Education, especially John Meyer and Dr. Felton Williams. I've known you all the longest, and I'll never forget the support that you've always provided. And to the other board members, I also thank you. And to Chris Steinhauser, Jill Baker, and Ruth Ashley, you guys have been a part of my life. And I just thank you for trusting me and letting me be me at the school sites. And to the executive staff, I thank you. Kristy, I've always, under your leadership, you were my principal supervisor, and I only wanted to be better. And I thank you. I thank all of you. And to my Nelson family, would my Nelson family just stand? I thank all of you. I've pushed you. I've changed your grade levels. If you had the credential, I even changed your subjects. And you just went along with me. But I just wanted everybody to be better. That's all. And because if we have better teachers, our students are better. And then to my friends, I need my friends to stand. My friends are the best friends because not only did we laugh together, but they let me cry. And also with my friends, I have a potty mouth. And they allowed me to have a potty mouth. So I thank, but not on the campus, just with my friends. And so I'm so thankful for my friends. And then last, my daughter. She's always by my side. When she first got into education in Long Beach, she didn't want anyone to know who her mother was because she wanted to do it by herself. But she's five years in now, so you can tell everybody. So it's okay. But I just want to say about me now. I was that poor child. I was the child from poverty. Six children, number five, the first to go to college. But as I said at the ALBA meeting, it was my third-grade teacher, eight-years-old, who told me I was smart. And it was because of her that I stand here. But also, more importantly, she was a woman of color. And she was my first African-American teacher. And all I want to say is that being a woman of color, I felt like I never wanted to disappoint. I felt like I knew that I had to work hard, maybe even twice as hard. Because I felt like I did not want to disappoint. I know I've been a role model, and I hope that I've made an impact on so many lives. I've learned a lot. And we just all need to make sure we stay together. And it was always real important that I was at a school where my parents felt like the school was good and great. And they did not have to go across town to get a good education. And that is what I prided myself on. That's why I pushed my teachers. That's why I pushed my assistant principals. That's why I pushed myself. Because every child deserves a quality school, a clean school, a welcoming inviting school. And it should be the best place for staff to work and the best place for students to learn. And I feel like I've done my job. And as my daughter says, I can now be grown-grown and do what I want to do. So from the bottom of my heart, I thank all of you. And let's never, ever forget about the students and forget why we have the jobs that we have. Because if it were not for the parents and the students, I would not be standing before you. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate all our retirees being here. You're welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting. It's always very thrilling. Or you can take this opportunity to go and celebrate your accomplishments. Okay, but we're gonna move on with the agenda. So let's see. Public testimony on items listed on the agenda, we have none. Staff report, we have none. Public testimony on items not listed on the agenda. And because these items are not listed on the agenda, we will not be discussing any of these items. So our first speaker is Camilla Marie.
Good evening. Thank you for being here and allowing us to speak. I'm an IA at Wilson High School. I've been there almost 15 years. I'm really dedicated to the students. I like working for the District. It's been fairly positive. But basically, I'm here about our cost of living raise. I don't understand fully what's going on with the benefits. I haven't invested that much into it. But the cost of living is vital. Some of us try to go back to school. I'm dedicated and educated. We really need our cost of living raises. I'm a member of the union. If I'm not invested in, then how am I to be better and refreshed for the school year that's coming? I mean, that raise helps me over the summer. I've been with the credit union a long time. I have summer savings. However, there's things that come up. I have elder parents, one of which I'm supporting this year. I also take that money and use for fruit snacks. But as a voter and being active in the community, I don't see so much being invested back into the staff of the classified. I work in special ed, basically as a one-on-one. And I need staff training. I have written the school members. I'm in boards, our district principals, you know, our department heads. And nothing's coming back. I mean, the last training I had was 10 years ago for nonviolent. But I'm specifically requesting that we do need our cost of living raises. I think it's great it goes retroactive, but we need to consider what's on the table. We need our money. You know, it's vital to us. The cost of living is very expensive in Long Beach. I've been in the community for 18, 20 years, downtown, and rent's going up. And how does it help me over the summer if I'm doing staff development? And something we're expecting because the teachers got it and we're not seeing it. You know, I see a lot of infrastructure happening on the outward part of the school, you know, the development and so forth, but not in the infrastructure. And that's the classified support staff. So thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Viola May?
Good evening. My name is Viola May Blutzow. I'm an instructional aide with special ed, and I currently work at Cabrillo. I am also on our negotiating team. We are definitely having some issues here with this negotiations. And it's kind of disconcerting that people who make the lowest wages within the district are being asked to make the biggest sacrifice in paying for their benefits. And it's only those who are part-time. It's not full-time, somebody who is working eight hours. But you have a food service worker who works maybe five hours, four hours, makes less than $2,000 a month, and now are being asked to pay anywhere from $300 to $500 a month for their benefits. How is that going to help them? How is that going to keep them from being homeless? We already have people who go to work every day in this district that are classified employees who are homeless, but yet they work. And at 62-years-old, I am going to be joining them soon because the house that I've been renting a room in is being sold, and I cannot find anything out there that will fit my budget. And I make roughly around $3,000 a month. I can't find anything under $3,000 to rent. So the fact that we are being cut over and over as classified employees, as an example, at Cabrillo, we have two classrooms that have, for summer school, we have two classrooms that have over 10, 12, 13 wheelchairs in them. But yet they only have four instructional aides and one teacher. Four aides and one teacher cannot push 14 wheelchairs. Fire drills, off the bus, to the classroom, to lunch, to whatever. So we are constantly making do with the least amount of resources. And as Camilla was saying, we're not getting the training. There are a lot of aides in this district that have never been trained how to do lifting or special things that work with special ed. And it's time to open it up to classified people. We are the least paid people in the district. We do the most work with the least amount of resources. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Enrique.
Hi, good evening. My name is Enrique. I'm a union member for CACA and a classified bilingual employee for the District. I'm here to ask why the District is proposing that at least 500 classified employees start paying for their health and benefits to the tune of $2 million of out-of-pocket expenses. We don't work in coal mines anymore. I don't know if you guys missed the last gas hike, the last rent hike, the last food hike, but things aren't getting any cheaper except our salaries. Every hike, every raise of minimum wage effectively decreases what we earn. How can we have a cost of living adjustment when we have to start paying for our benefits? I invite you to read the Press Telegram article dated June 12, 2019, which draws questions from the teachers' union. And according to the teachers' union, President Barry Welch, his words, not mine, "Leadership has chosen to increase the already top-heavy management dynamic with six new upper management positions." Guess as classified employees, we can only conclude where our $2 million is going, into more management positions. I am positive that the District will only offer us a 2% raise as they did with the teachers, and they want us to accept having to contribute to our benefits from this point forward. The time to act is now. There is no secret that the District has great reserves. It is public knowledge. Even Board Member Dr. Felton Williams in his farewell article for the Press Telegram dated July 11, 2019, said, and I am quoting him, "It's a good time to leave. We have a safety net financially. I am leaving it in a good shape." And you know, as a CACA union, we believe him 100% in that statement. The District even approved a new charter school. Look at the news. Every single charter school has a bad reputation. You approve a charter school that dips into the District funds. Maybe the $2 million that the District will take from us will go to support the charter schools. This is another conclusion. We are fighting for our cost of living adjustment, and the District is failing its classified employees. The District is selling this so-called "pay-for-your-benefits" thing through fear and misinformation. We need your support to stop this proposal, and we ask for your help. Please help. Please help.
Mr. Gilbert Bonilla.
I'm the CSEA Long Beach Chapter Two President. Good evening, Board of Education. Excuse me. Good evening, Board of Education Directors, Superintendent. I thank the classified members for being here today. Thank you for your work, your solidarity, and your activism. We are here in this room. We classified are the future of the labor movement, our movement, and there is no question that each and every one of us is needed now more than ever before in this district. We are living in what Dr. King called "the fierce urgency of now." One year before Dr. King was killed, he issued a warning that in this unfolding conundrum of life and history, there is such a thing as being too late. This is no time for apathy or complacency. This is time for vigorous and positive action. My brothers and sisters know, this is that time. This is a time to take risks. This is a time to get uncomfortable. That's when real progress and change is made. You must understand that we feel the attacks against us are vicious, against workers' rights, waiting on long negotiations and raises, safe working conditions, bringing rise to division over who pays for health benefits. They are all being threatened as we speak. The labor movement will always be mobilized and organized to defend ourselves, our communities, and our values, but we cannot afford to confuse protecting what we have with winning what we need. Dr. King's example calls us to stop looking at our shoes and start reaching for the stars. My assurance to you is that we are in this battle to win it today and every day, and I mean really win it. We won't be the middle of the pack. We'll be the tip of the spear, fighting for our rights. So we are ready to mobilize, ready to fight for safe working conditions, for fair wages that keep up with the cost of living, and of course, health and welfare benefits. We are ready to win. We make LBSD great. We keep it safe. We teach, heal, and make. We package, print, and bake. We digitize and talivise. We transport children and greet them at the gate. We file clean and are the faces that are last seen. We make repairs and lift loads. We stand tall. We don't run and hide. Our eyes are open. Our minds are on alert. We matter. We're fearless, strong, powerful. We are united. We are the California School Employees Association Labor Movement, and we will not be ignored. Thank you, and God bless.
Our next speaker is Christina. Christina Klens.
I'm a Behavior Intervention Assistant, and I work for the Office of School Support Services, and I'm a CSEA union member. I didn't really prepare to speak today, but I just jotted down a couple of things that I wanted to say, and I'm here mainly to address the health benefits. If the current proposal is accepted by the school, the current proposal that the school district has proposed will decrease my income by 25%. That is one quarter of my salary. I would like the school, the school board, to consider the differences in the salaries between what the teachers make and what the classified employees make. The part-time teachers who pay into their healthcare benefits make, their median income is quite larger than what ours is. And I also would like the board to consider negotiating with the insurance companies to lower the amount that the district pays for the healthcare, rather than negotiating with the people who are receiving the healthcare, as in the members for the union. And that's what I had to say. Thank you.
Next, we have Personnel, Dr. Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have the Personnel Report prepared by David Zaid, the Assistant Superintendent of HR, and approved by the Superintendent Chris Steinhouser. I will read the classified portion of the report first, followed by the certificated portion. There were 547 appointments, 11 leases of absence, 19 resignations, 12 retirements, and two amendments. For the certificated portion, there were 232 appointments, 151 in-service changes, seven leases of absence, four resignations, six retirements, and 10 amendments, and I move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Quick question. Is this normally the time that we have so many in-service changes, Superintendent?
Got it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Instruction.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a shout-out to OCIPD. Again, this is every, every one of these items are new courses that they are writing and researching and coming up with curriculum and textbook suggestions. So thank you to our curriculum team for creating really, these are the, a lot of them are the CTE courses, so some really exciting opportunities for our students to learn. So thanks to that team.
Yes.
I want to piggyback on that, Board Member Curris. We have new management courses, marketing courses, culinary arts courses, automotive and transportation technology. So these are great opportunities for our CTE strategy. So agreed.
Yes. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Finance Report A. Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Finance Report B.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I recuse myself from participation in Finance Report B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 109-1 and 87-100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the payees.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? One, so passes 4-1. Business Department Report.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Purchasing and Contracts Report A. Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Purchasing and Contracts Report B.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I recuse myself from participation in Purchasing Contract Report B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 109-1 and 87-100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the contractors.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 4-1. Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, the first item is student readmits. We're pleased to admit student 960 and student 577 to the district, and they will be assigned to schools, on school student services.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0.
Next, we have one student up for expulsion, student 533. This student would be expelled under Education Codes 48915A2 and 48915C2, and would not be eligible to apply for readmission until June 11, 2020.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0.
Excuse me, next we have some administrative assignments. Staff is recommending Tracy Hall, who is currently a teacher on special assignment at Carver, to be the Assistant Principal at Dooley Elementary, and Juan Gonzalez, who is currently Assistant Principal at Dooley, to be Assistant Principal of Lincoln, and Connie Granari, who is currently a teacher on special assignment in OCIPD, to be the Activity Specialist at Cabrillo High School, and Jared Mollywatt, who is currently the Counselor at Sado, to be the Head Counselor at Sado, Mary Martinez, who is currently the Head Counselor at Reed, to be the Head Counselor at Beach and Reed, and Lindsay Evans, who is currently a coordinating teacher for the Child Development Centers, to be a program coordinator for the Child Development Centers.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. And if we have any of these folks with us tonight?
I don't believe we do.
We don't? Okay.
Next, we have the Williams UCP Quarterly Report. This is just an information item. We do this four times a year by law, and we had no complaints.
Unfinished business, we have none. Board meeting schedule.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Board Policy 5149, Student-Employee Interaction.
And before you take a motion or a second, we do have a recommendation for a change, so I'll turn it over to Mrs. Ashley. Yumi?
Thank you, Board Members. Our proposed change is on the first page of the Board Policy. And so, as you know, we have this Board Policy to really support the other policies we have in place in terms of sectional harassment and code of ethics. This one focuses specifically and gives parameters for our teachers, our classified staff, every single employee who is a mandated reporter. That includes our walk-on coaches, athletic coaches, music coaches, even our volunteers, so that we can all have appropriate boundaries with our students. So the change that we are proposing is on the first page. It is the second bullet, when you see the four bulleted, excuse me, the first bulleted item, where it says, "Protect employees from prohibited or unauthorized student-employee interactions which may result in false allegations." Our proposal is to strike out prohibited or unauthorized student-employee and replace it with "protect employees from engaging in interactions which may result in false allegations." We hope that this provides clarity to the statement.
Quick question, Ms. Ashley. So the wording, the hyphenated student hyphen employee is also stricken?
Yes. Yes.
I'm reading it as protect employees from engaging in student-employee interactions which may result in false allegations?
Yes.
That's the proposed change? Okay.
Okay, so would that be the only change, then, to the policy? Okay, so that's the policy we're voting on. I need a motion?
So move. Second.
Discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Board Policy 6142.1, Sexual Health and HIV/AIDS Prevention Instruction.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted, this is an addition to, so it's an existing policy that we're adding some information to. And the thing I wanted to point out is on page two of the Board Policy. Yes, page two, the fifth paragraph, "The Superintendent or Designee will appoint a Coordinator and an Advisory Committee Regarding the District's condom availability program." So this policy sets the parameters, and when we talk about implementation and what that looks like, where, it's my understanding, according to this, that we're bringing together a group of stakeholders and parents, some health curriculum staff, to look at what the most appropriate implementation policy will be, and then we'll start that probably after the first of the calendar year, so next January or February, correct?
You are correct. So if the Board approves this policy, beginning this fall, we will bring together a diverse group of stakeholders who will come back to you later, probably in December, January, get with their recommendations, and you can give feedback at that time with the implementation date of the policy to be February 3 of 2020.
Great. And I just wanted to, in support of this, some people ask why now, and we are doing great work around our sexual health and HIV prevention program. We're working with the City of Long Beach and their Health Department. They actually had their health educators come in and work with our teachers who teach this content, so they have the most up-to-date information. And I think this is a really important part of the partnership to help keep our kids and our community healthy. There was a report released by the city not very long ago, I think it was about eight weeks ago, that although the number of new HIV diagnoses are declining, the new rate of infections in Long Beach remains higher than LA County, that cities across the nation have seen a reduction in funding in STDs, and there are significant increases, 88% in chlamydia in the last five years, and that's our local. And just also pointing out, there's a great report, I will, you can get it at the City of, the City of Long Beach's Health Department website if you're interested in looking at the full report. But we know that these issues disproportionately impact our students living in high-poverty areas. Some of the biggest increases are happening in 90805 and 90802, in our Latinx population, in our Black and African-American population, and those living below the federal poverty line. And there's really detailed information in this report, but know that the City of Long Beach has the second-highest rate of chlamydia in the state, the second-highest rate of gonorrhea in the state, and the third-highest rate of syphilis in the state. So I appreciate that we are clarifying what our position is in giving all of our students and families the most up-to-date information, but also the tools to help them keep themselves safe. And I think this is an important part of the partnership that we make with our partner agencies in doing good work for students and families. So I look forward to seeing that committee kick off so that we can do this in a really smart and respectful way. So appreciate this being brought forward tonight.
Just to add, Board Member Curris, thank you for highlighting some of those statistics from that report. Given the huge health ramifications and the importance of having a successful sex ed and HIV prevention instruction, can you highlight sort of what our process is going to be for constituting that committee, Superintendent?
Yes, so, excuse me, so we will go to various stakeholders, this board being one, and other groups, asking names for students, parents, and others, and then it will be run through our Health Committee Curriculum Leader, and then they will meet, like any other group, talk about the process, review other districts who have done this, then come back to you with that part.
Okay, great. Looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Can I recommend a couple of organizations that we could reach out to?
Absolutely.
PTA is one of them, and also the center. I don't know if they were already on the list. Do we have a person who's going to facilitate that committee?
Yeah, it will be our curriculum lead, Susan.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Definitely need my glasses for the next one. Resolution 071519-A, authorizing the sale and issuance of one or more series of general obligation bonds under the herein referenced Measure K authorization in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $150 million, and one or more series of general obligation funds under the herein referenced Measure E authorization in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $300 million, and authorizing the execution of necessary documents and certificates relating to the sale and issuance of said bonds. I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah. Can we get Yumi to kind of give an overview of what all those words together mean?
Of course. This authorizes the sale of bonds in support of our Measure E and Measure K programs, the amount of $300 million for the Measure E program and $150 million for the Measure K program. We're proposing a competitive sale of bonds in which large institutional investors would bid to sell and underwrite the bonds. bid to sell and underwrite the bonds. Our next step in the process would be to get our credit ratings from the credit rating agencies, Moody's and SMP, and the district has generally enjoyed very favorable credit ratings, based on the financial stability and the financial strength of the district, as well as the strong property tax base that we enjoy here in Long Beach. We plan to go to market in August with proceeds at the beginning of September. And I'd like to, and required to publicly disclose, the total cost of taxpayers, based on our best estimates at this time, our good-faith estimates. For the Measure K series, we estimate a true interest cost of 4.06 percent, a finance charge or a cost of issuance charge of $1.67 million, proceeds to total $149,83,000 for a total cost of $298,451,650. For Measure E series, a true interest cost of 4 percent, a finance charge or cost of issuance of $3.33 million, total proceeds to total $299,670,000 for a total cost of And we believe these are very conservative estimates, but we'll know when the sale happens.
Thank you. And just to clarify for anyone who's pitching in or catching this now, these are already approved by the voters. This isn't anything new that we're bringing, it's just selling the bonds that the voters have already approved us to sell.
Yes, exactly, and our next planned issuance.
Next plan.
Yumi, just a quick question. Could you explain the difference in true interest costs for both bonds?
Yes, those are the interest costs, incorporating the total finance charge, as well as the interest cost that we would pay on the bonds, that would be the true interest, so that would be the true interest that the taxpayers would pay on the bonds.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes five zero. Reorganization of the Board, do we have any nominations for President?
Madam Chair, before we do that, I have an issue I want to raise. So our charter requires us to move to a new cycle, beginning next year, meaning that we'll have March primaries with a November general election, and I think that new cycle has implications on our reorg schedule. So we are scheduled to do the same thing next July. I wasn't a part of this when I came in last year, so this is my first time through it, and as I was going through the agenda, and at one of our previous board meetings, we actually talked about, excuse me, some of the implications, potential implications, of moving to the new cycle. I think this is one of them. So we have our regularly scheduled reorg in July, however, next year's cycle would put that reorg meeting between the March primary and the general November, which in theory, new board members would be sworn in in December. So then, you know, we have this sort of halfway, whether we're going to have a full-year term, longer than a full-year term, or if we're doing a reorg in July, we'd have to do another reorg in December. So is Brent around by any chance?
He's here, he's always here.
Our attorney, could you bring some light onto this, Brent? Brent, sorry.
Sure, some light onto this. Have you ever been to the Winchester Mansion, and you saw that there were staircases that led to nowhere?
I've been there.
Sometimes when you reorganize a house, you end up with stairwells that lead to strange places. So you're meeting tonight under Section 2209 of the City Charter. Section 2209 assumes that you had elections under the prior election cycle, and it says that you shall meet on the third Monday of every July, and reorganize yourselves to hold an election for a new Board President, for a new Board Vice President, and that term shall last for one year. Okay, enter the addition now that Long Beach City did with their recent ordinance. What that city ordinance says is that with your new election cycle, which will be March and November, that once that new person is seated, or new people are seated, on the third Tuesday of December, then you combine that with the Education Code, which says that within fifteen days of that in December, you'll have another reorganization meeting. I think that the fairest reading of these two merged together, is that we'll need to have another reorg meeting next July, and then another reorg meeting after new people are appointed in December. So potentially whoever is placed up today for President and Vice, not potentially, for President and Vice President, there will be another reorg meeting in December, at which time then it will be a new vote with a potentially new slate of officers.
So what it means is that tonight you vote for President and Vice President, they would serve from this July to next July, then we would reorg and have another election, and you could have an individual that serves six months if he or she were terming out, because come December, you would have another reorg, correct?
Correct.
Wouldn't that, thank you, Brent, I'm still trying to visualize the six months and the one year. Wouldn't that have implications, though, if the requirement is that the Vice President and the President serve a year term? Wouldn't that have implications on our process of reorg? Because in theory, what we're saying is, we're making a decision for potentially a school board member that could only serve, that wouldn't be able to complete their one-year term, because that term would be over upon the December swearing of the new board members.
And I can't express an opinion on that yet. You're correct that the charter, under 2209, says that whoever is elected today will serve for a one-year term. When you meet next July, I think you're going to be meeting under that exact same provision. The question then will be, come December, which is going to control, City Charter Section 220, I'm sorry, 2209, or the new city ordinance, which says that you have to appoint the new person in December, and the ed code, which says that you have to reorg in December? I don't have an answer that will answer your question yet for next December.
Do you think?
I'll be working with the city attorney on that, to clarify that in a future charter amendment.
So, given that we don't have an answer for this yet, but it's coming, do you think that has any implications on our reorg process and decision tonight?
Well, the only implication that I could say is that you should be looking forward to another reorg a year from today, and likely another reorg December 2020. What you do with those implications is way beyond my pay grade.
So tonight, whoever is selected as President and Vice President would serve for one year till July.
Does the new charter, the way the city wrote the new charter piece, you mentioned to seat them on the third Tuesday. Now, I know that's the rule for City Council, so, because they have their meeting tomorrow, but ours, if I'm remembering the charter correctly, ours specifically says the third Monday.
Yes.
So does the new charter that was approved speak specifically to the school district's current Monday, or is it just the city's Tuesday, and we'll assume? I'm just wondering if there's specific language to us on that third Monday in December?
So I have to get hyper-technical, but there is no new city charter yet. What was passed this year by the City of Long Beach was an ordinance, which is different from a charter amendment. Charter amendment, I believe, under the city charter would have to be approved by the people.
Correct.
Okay, but under that city ordinance, what it says is that, beginning in 2020, candidates shall be nominated in March, elected in November, and assume office on the third Tuesday in December. So that's when they assume office. It states specifically with respect to the terms of the Long Beach Unified School District, that the terms of those elected in 2016 should be extended by five months, July through December, to match them with the new election cycle as permitted by California Elections Code. It does not speak specifically to a different day of the week that the school board would meet.
That it does, but it does currently now.
The city charter currently...
It has a Monday and a Tuesday.
It currently has two assumptions with respect to a Monday. One is that new members would be sworn in on the third Monday of July. That can't be applicable, because we won't have had an election immediately preceding that, right? They will have been elected in November. The second assumption is that you would reorg that third Monday in July after those new members are seated. And hence, we have one of our stairwells that doesn't quite lead to where the original architects intended. More to come as we work with the city attorney to propose an amendment to the charter that would clarify that.
So Brent, I'm going to add two additional interesting elements to this, and because I'm trying to walk through the scenario, right, so I'm not trying to be difficult here. There are implications, both fiscally and in terms of our academic year calendar, and we've talked about this, for someone getting sworn in in December, based on these two scenarios, we potentially have two school board seats up for this next cycle, 2020, just given the lay of the land right now. We could have outright winners in March, or we could have a runoff in November. If we have outright winners in March, that, they still don't get sworn in until November, so that leaves...
December.
I'm sorry, December, right. So that's why, you know, we have a hodgepodge here of stairs. It's not just one staircase leading up. So I do think it has implications, one, on process, but two, on the considerations that we make for the new President and Vice President of this Board.
You've correctly stated the way that the new ordinance was written. Just to be clear, though, whoever previously held that seat will continue on in office until that meeting in December, when the new member is sworn in.
So we currently have two members planning to retire, that instead of retiring next July, would be staying in office until December.
Correct.
That's one of the implications.
They were voluntold by statute that they have an additional five months.
And one of them is our current Vice President.
Yes.
It's interesting, we're pondering all these uncertainties in life that we meet every day. Why don't we just deal with this year and see what happens down the road?
Well, that's certainly an option.
No further questions for me?
Do we have any more questions? It doesn't look like, it doesn't look like we do, so I think we're going to proceed.
I have questions, but not for Brent.
Okay.
Actually, I have questions of my fellow Board Members here, and again, I wasn't part of this process last year, so I'm just getting, it comes from two angles, one, what we just discussed, but two, I think it would be good for the public, and for me in particular, to hear sort of what the expectations and responsibilities of the Vice President and the President are. And all of you, me as the exception, have served both of those capacities, so I would love to hear anything that you'd like to share in terms of responsibilities and expectations for those two positions.
Well, as a Board, our, I believe that our strength is in the five of us, and that when you serve as President, you're, it's not too much different than being an actual Board Member, because our strength is in all five together as a group. But sometimes, there are certain documents that are only signed by the President. Sometimes, there are organizations or school events or that type of thing, where they want the President there, you know, to represent the district. So you tend to have more obligations, that type of thing. And with the Vice President, that is the person who will fill in and preside over this meeting when the President is not available. That's one of the main rules. Or to fill in at an event or something else that the President can't attend. Those are generally the ideas I can think of off the top of my head, if anybody else would like to add to that.
We've got the authority in Brent, you know, who can respond to that, I think, more cogently than I can, in terms of the legal status of those positions. So, you know, I would ask Brent to clarify.
I think that was well-stated. I mean, the Education Code, as well as, I believe, Board Policy, I'd have to go back and take a look at your Board Policy, state the responsibilities of the Board President. The Board President is to conduct business, and the Vice President is to conduct the business of the body in the absence of the Board President. The Board President is also required by statute to meet with the Superintendent to help to set and to formulate the agenda. I think those are the official, spelled-out duties, but this Board has typically delegated other duties, including, you know, ceremonial representations and other events that you attend as well.
Thank you, Brent.
The only other thing I would add is that the President of the Board usually does not sit on any of our subcommittees, so for example, that's delegated to other members of the Board, including the Vice President. And as you all know, we try to rotate the members of the Board on the different subcommittees, so that everyone meets all those obligations.
And to that point, Mr. Superintendent, the President also assigns subcommittees?
Correct. So Board Members have in the past given their interest to the Board President to say, "I serve on the Finance Committee, I'd like to serve another year," or "I've never served on the Personnel Committee, I'd like to serve on that committee." But there is the expectation that eventually people would serve on all committees, because that's how you have a greater understanding of the business, the day-to-day operations.
Sure. And thank you for the question. And I'll share the non-technical answer, I guess, because I think if you asked the four of us, I think we would perceive our, how we approached being Chair of the Board or President of the Board differently. So all I can speak to is my own experience and my own desire to really be a strong face for kids. So as Board Chair, I took very seriously being present in community meetings, to parents, to groups, knowing that sometimes they need a face, they need one face. For as much as we all talk about they are all of our kids, and we go to events across the district, I was honored to be that person, that face, when I was Chair last year. I took it really seriously, in the sense that we are the largest employer in the city, we are the largest landowner in the city, and the work that we do matters to families everywhere. And so for me, it was an honor that I undertook with seriousness, so that I could not only represent our 10,000 employees, our 70,000 kids and their families, but my colleagues here on the Board. So I know at times it's procedural. For me, it was a really important year in the work that I saw myself doing for students and families across Long Beach. And again, that is my story, that isn't everybody's story who's ever served in that position. But for me, there was a lot of hard work, in addition to the technical being here for the meetings and meeting with the Superintendent, and setting agendas and signing papers.
I have to agree with you on that one, and I feel like when you show up and represent the district, you're actually supporting whatever organization or school or entity, and that means a lot. It says a lot for the district. People really appreciate that. So I would have to agree with our colleague that that is a big part of, you know, being the Chair, is that representation and that support. And it's a very, it's done in a very visible way, and it's meaningful. And so it might not be, you know, dictated by ed code or anything else written, but as an unwritten rule, I think that is a big part of that position.
Thank you. Super important. And so in terms of process, we take action on a President, and then that new President would preside over the decision for the Vice President? Is that the way it works?
Yes. So I guess the big question is, do we have any nominations for President?
Yes, Madam Chair, I nominate John Meyer, President.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. I respectfully decline, and I would like to nominate Dr. Williams. And my reason for that, Dr. Williams came on the Board in 2004, I the year before. I have watched his work as a strong advocate for all students. He has reached out into areas of the community I've never seen any other member do before, and most effectively, in doing all he can to narrow the achievement gap and champion the personal and academic success of every student. So in his last year, full year, or maybe a little longer, on the Board, I think it would be fitting that we honor Dr. Williams as our next President. I think it would be fitting that we honor Dr. Williams as our next president of the Board of Education.
Thank you, John.
Okay. So do we just do a regular vote, then? So...
You'd have to ask if there's any nominations.
Oh, okay. Are there any other nominations? All right, then we will vote on that. So discussion, is that appropriate? Oh, I need a second. Second. Okay, so now, any further discussion? Okay, and you would accept the nomination, I guess that's a good question.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Well, it is unanimous, Dr. Williams, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I will take my things and we'll trade places, I guess.
I want to thank my fellow board members, and I want to thank Diana Craighead for the tremendous job she's done as president of this board. Done a phenomenal job, Diana, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Now the nominations are open for vice president.
I nominate Dr. Benitez for vice president.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion is approved, five to zero. Congratulations, Juan. Musical chairs. Now we will have the report of board members, and let me-
We need to do certification of signatures, the next item.
I do have to finish-
We have to do that now?
Correct, you have to vote on the signatures, because you've just reorged, so you have to take action. It's the last item under new business. The 2019-20 certification.
My apologies, here it is, right here. Certification of signatures and signature authority, do I have a motion?
That's with the addition of David Zadez.
David Zadez, correct.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved, five to zero. Now we have the report of board members. Let me start with John Meyer.
No report, thank you.
Juan?
Yeah, I actually have a written statement. So, a year... My eyes are so bad, I gotta get new glasses. A year ago last July, I was sworn in to serve our Board of Education and represent the students and the community members of area three of our district. I'd like to share a few reflections and observations from this past year and some thoughts for me moving forward. I've tried my very best to serve the students and families of our district. Of course, now this thing's messing up on me. I'm very proud of all of the assets, gifts, talents that our district has. Our students, without a doubt, are the best. This past year, I found a new respect for the hard work of countless of individuals in our district. Just so many hours, the extra effort, going above and beyond what's expected that our teachers put forth, our nurses, speech pathologists, librarians, administrators, classified employees, thank you for being here tonight, and all of our district staff and everything that everyone does. It's also been extremely gratifying for me to be privy to the many efforts and the so many things that our engaged parents contribute to our students. They are, you know, at the core of our success as well, district-wise. It's the tremendous work that our PTAs, our PTOs, our school site councils, our committees, our parent volunteers, and other parent groups that are supporting our students and our mission really contribute. It's invaluable to us. I've also learned a lot this past year, and I'm very proud to be a part of where I see our district going. I see a lot of areas and opportunities for improvement as well. When I ran and was elected, there were particular priorities that I ran on and areas of interest to me, and I believe that these are areas that our district can and will continue to advance and improve on and strengthen. So I want to name a few of these areas tonight. Our efforts with our emerging bilinguals, our English learners, some would say, our immigrant students, our undocumented students and families, particularly some of the challenge with our long-term English learners. I look forward to continuing to receive updates from our D-LAC, E-LAC, D-CAC recommendations and our EL initiative. Thank you for everyone that's working in those areas. I've been impressed with all of the dual immersion efforts district-wide that we've highlighted and advanced. Home languages, multiliteracy, multilingualism, all contribute to a successful global citizen, and that's at the core of a successful state and a thriving 21st century for our nation and our economy. I look forward to our district continuing to expand our DI programming. So I'll continue to advocate for this and bringing highly qualified DI pro... I'm sorry, high-quality dual immersion programming to our students. And I have particular interest in bringing some of those programs to our downtown area of Long Beach. With regards to providing a supportive culture for LGBTQ+ students and continuing to provide all the social and emotional supports for our most vulnerable students, I look forward to our district continuing our work with regard to gender-neutral restrooms, our anti-bullying efforts, and our commitment to safe and supportive schools. I think it's important for us to continue to look at, you know, ways that we can, you know, address some of the things that came out, for instance, in the Quality California Safe and Supportive Schools reporting. So I'm proud of what we're doing, I look forward to continuing to build on that work. I think our district has done really good work in eliminating the achievement and opportunity gaps. Our superintendent just shared some data with us that we'll be, you know, showing to the public regarding eliminating our achievement gaps, particularly amongst our African-American students. I look forward to our district continuing to tackle our achievement and opportunity gap amongst our Latinx, Black, and other students of color, particularly amongst our male students. So I want to keep advancing the work of our male and female leadership academies, our urban math collaborative, our ethnic studies programming, our Long Beach Promise 2.0, and continuing for us to, you know, look for innovative ways and evidence-based approaches to address this achievement and opportunity gap. Related to this, I appreciate all the steps our district has taken to provide professional development opportunities for the social and emotional well-being of students, our work around relationship-centered schools, mental health supports, implicit bias trainings, restorative justice trainings, our vision around less punitive approaches to school discipline and more restorative and holistic practices. I think it's important for us to ramp up our efforts in these areas. We have family resource centers now as an additional resource, so I look forward to a second year of our family resource centers as well. Our district has made great strides in community engagement. I look forward to continuing to expand these efforts and engaging parents, particularly from our most vulnerable communities. We had a retiree tonight make reference to being proud of your neighborhood school. We have a bottleneck right now through our school of choice of students from a certain part of Long Beach wanting to go to schools in other parts of Long Beach. So there's some work for us to be done here. I think our LCAP process this last year really highlights the power of parent engagement and community engagement. I look forward to seeing more community participation in our LCAP processes and other decision-making mechanisms. I think folks, if they've been paying attention to our LCAP process, they know that those recommendations that a handful of parents made are going to be implemented here in our district. So I want to encourage our community members to keep participating, keep pushing us, keep holding us accountable to include you in our decision-making. As part of that, I'm gonna recommend that our school board also consider rotating our school board meetings in the neighborhood schools, so that more parents, more community members have access and that we have a packed room here every night when we deliberate on these decisions. With regard to special education, I'm so proud of the resolution that we passed earlier this year. I know we still have a lot of work to do with our IEP processes, with strengthening our district's capacity, and with the parent engagement piece as well. I look forward to continuing to receive updates on how we're advancing the recommendations from our special education, community advisory committee, and really upholding the words in our resolution that we passed. In terms of our efforts regarding early care and education, I'm glad that we got that Head Start grant and that funding. That was a, you know, that had us sweating here, at least me, for a little bit. I look forward to seeing all the learnings and cross-pollinization that's occurring through our EduCare site. Wonderful work going on there. As we know, the three big issues facing early care education efforts is the need for more centers serving our highest-needs communities and populations, high-quality staff, and providing high-quality programming. So EduCare is the model, let's tap into that and continue using that as a model for our efforts across our district. Regarding our sustainability efforts, I was so impressed by the students, teachers, and staff that showed up and showcased what they're doing as green teams in our district. I look forward to our district developing and implementing a waste reduction plan. I know that we're implementing our solar project. Our nutrition services is looking at locally sourced nutritious, healthy options for our students. Our plant and facilities folks are doing all kinds of work across the district. So I think it's time for us to think about the importance of a sustainability coordinator and what that role could provide for our district advancing our sustainability efforts. Finally, I'm looking forward next month to us beginning that conversation of adopting a Community Workforce Development Agreement and policy, and local policy hire, where we have committed to hiring local disadvantaged workers, expanding our workforce development efforts as a district, and really having this be reflected through our procurement processes here. I've been visualizing, ever since I joined this board, strengthening our partnerships with labor, expanding internships and pre-apprenticeship programs for our students, link learning, project-based learning, the career tech ed that we just talked about tonight, and formalizing our commitment to local hiring and hiring of disadvantaged workers in particular. We have strong, strong working families here in Long Beach. Let's tap into that and reflect it through our own practices here as a district. I've also visualized many of our students from our district, but particularly from those area codes that you highlighted tonight, Board Member Kerr, where they're being prepared by our district to be both college and career-ready, and them having apprenticeships and pre-apprenticeships and internships in their pathways, and them graduating and coming back and working at one of our schools with a highly valued degree, in a benefited, well-paying position, and then living in Long Beach, being able to afford to live in Long Beach and reinvest that right back into our communities. That's what a community workforce and local hire policy can do. I know we have done a lot of good stuff, we have a really good district. I'm proud to be a member of this board and now to be your vice president. So I wholeheartedly believe we can do better as well. We have great people here in our district, great staff, all across. I'm committed to continuing to strive for a stronger district so that all students, all means all, as we like to say, but we also uphold that. So I look forward to working with my colleagues here on the board, with our community members, our parents, our students, our executive staff, and anyone else that wants to join this great alliance. So I thank you all for this first year of service.
Thank you, Juan, for that report. Diana?
That's kind of hard to follow, so I don't know if you left any stone unturned, so I think I'll just leave it at that. And well said, and thank you, and we appreciate your contributions on the board as well.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes, co-sign. Would like to put my signature on the bottom of that statement.
Let's do it next July.
Next July. I just want to express the gratitude that I have for our staff at every single level, at every school site, at every district office, every remote district office, including transportation and nutrition services and those groups who sometimes don't always feel like they're connected to us because they're away from us so often, but who do fundamental work in educating every student and supporting every family in this district and supporting the rest of us who are charged with doing this policy work. I couldn't... Thank you for your statement. I would like to add, one of the things that I'm excited about is our partnership with our community service agencies, with our fire department and our police department, and really looking at a public service pathway so that our students in this district can be the people who protect us and respond to us in the future and that those departments will look like us and look like our communities. So that is one thing I am also really excited about. I'm also excited about exploring our part in housing issues that are impacting the city of Long Beach and, as so eloquently stated, our own employees, and seeing if we have a role to play in that work as well and being open to thinking creatively. So it has been a tremendous year. The one thing I will say that I did, event-wise, was on Friday, it was Parent Day at Long Beach Junior Lifeguards. And that is a program that we started this year in partnership to support students financially and transportation to participate in a program that is a direct feeder into public safety opportunities. And so on Parent Day, parents were invited to come and participate to swim with their students, to run with their students, and if they wanted to, to jump off the Belmont Pier with their students. So I was honored to have Chief Medina. I went out on the rescue boat, and I got to watch our students jump from the pier first in the morning from the rescue boat below, and then in the afternoon, some of specifically our students from the west side and the north jump off the pier in the afternoon with their parents, and running into parents and their gratitude for us investing in that work and having a student who, it's all he talks about now. So as he heads off to CAMHS in the fall, he's already asked for a surfboard for Christmas. And so those are the surprising things that happen when we're open to partnerships and thinking creatively. So we've opened up a world for a group of kids, and we will debrief and open up it even more next year, I hope. So thank you to our community partners who do the work with us every day.
Thank you, Megan. Just briefly, it was noted earlier by one of the speakers about the article that appeared recently about my comments about how much support we get in this city from so many good folks. And that is a hallmark that this district certainly does well with. Our community partners have done such a tremendous job in all phases of supporting this district and from providing school uniforms, eyeglasses, and so forth. All the things that make it easier for our students to be successful and pay attention in the classroom. These are all essential things, and the time that I've spent serving on the Council of Great City Schools that represents 72 of the nation's largest urban school districts, I don't see that kind of community response in those districts compared to the kind of response we get from folks here in Long Beach, which makes Long Beach a very special place. I also want to just briefly thank Chris and David for their help recently in a presentation we did to the ministers, Long Beach ministers. And thank you both for coming in and helping with that presentation to get the ministers more involved with our students. Appreciate your help. And being rescued by our good folks from media services when the equipment wasn't working as we got ready to do the slide presentation. Thank you guys for stopping everything you were doing to come down and help us out with that. Appreciate it very much. Mr. Superintendent?
Two things. First of all, no one can leave until you sign an important piece of paper, so please, make sure you stay. And secondly, I just want to publicly thank Dr. Camarino, Mr. Chris Brown, Mr. Lansbury, and Ms. Salvio for joining me with an important meeting at Avalon. We had a great meeting there, and we will continue to have meetings in the fall, we'll keep you posted. So thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Announcements? Okay. We are adjourned.